Hey everybody, Dr. Preston Jr. here with DouglasNow.com, live from Studio B at my house. I had to relocate from my usual spot. We've got a little bit of a funny lighting and funny angle here. I apologize for that. I had to set up a makeshift desk. Because it being summertime, my family is all still awake, so I could not do our discussion where I usually do. What I want to do is take a few minutes here and talk about in a little more detail the city commission meeting last night. I'm going to try to keep this short. I realize it's about 10:30 or so, and I want to cover a few things and discuss a few things. And if you have any questions, sometimes with the updates that I've gotten on my phone, I can't always see the comments, okay? So, a lot of times I can't tell what people are saying until after I log off and go back and look, but if I see a comment that I can answer, if you have a question, I'll do my best to answer it, at least give you my opinion on it. One thing I want to do before we get too far is I want to address a couple of complaints that people had last night about not being able to hear the audio through my phone. And when I'm in a meeting like that, there's not a whole lot I can do about that. I try to get as close to everybody as I can, but you depend on how loud someone's talking, and the acoustics of the room, the sound system and all that. I was seeing your comments about you can't hear a whole lot, but it was nothing I could do. One thing that you can do is you can listen with a headset or Bluetooth, and a lot of times that'll amplify the sound, and you can hear what's going on. I have ordered a kit, a microphone kit for my phone. I ordered that today, so I hope it'll be here by the time the next meeting. I want to thank Ms. Miriam Holland for helping me out with that, helping me find a suitable kit. But I hope for the next meeting I'll have a microphone that I can use, that'll connect to the phone, that'll make the audio a little clearer. But again, if you have audio problems, there's not a whole lot I can do about that other than walk up and get closer to the people who are speaking. And I don't think that would go over very well in the city commission meeting setting if I walk over and stuck the phone in one of the commissioners' face. I think they would appreciate that very much. What I want to do is I want to give you a few opinions of what happened last night. A lot of you watched it and saw some of the junk that went on. I want to offer a few opinions about that. But before I do that, I want to talk about what the city commission actually did, because they did take some action. They did do some things last night. There were several items on the agenda, I think we've got here, and they're all Roman numerals, so I have to try to figure that out. I think there are about 15 or 16 items on here. They took action on seven or eight of them. The others were first readings of changes to ordinances and public hearings and things like that. It was a two-hour work session. The meeting lasted about 30 minutes, okay? So, what tied everybody up for an hour and a half, because most of these items are pretty mundane, what tied everybody up were the items that did not need any action. That's where the discussion was, and we'll talk about those in a minute. But what did the commission do last night? The commission, I believe, decided to replace well number four, the well number four pump, which services Pilgrims Pride. That well went down a week or so ago, and it was very costly. They actually rebuilt that, I think, one time it went down. This time it went down, they decided instead of rebuilding it, they were going to replace it. I want to say it cost somewhere around $16,000. They agreed to do that. They've got an appointment to the Air Base Preservation and Development Committee. They've got a vacancy there. They also have a vacancy on the Airport Commission. Kim Cook is moving, so they're going to have to replace her. Discuss the resolution for the Rural Zone Destination Application, what that was. What that is, is that's a program, an economic development incentive program through one of the state agencies to designate downtown as a rural zone destination, help with economic development opportunities. They also held the first reading of an amendment to the Motorized Car Ordinance, which basically says now if you're going to use a motorized car in the city of Douglas, you have to have your driver's license on your person at all time. They also discussed amendment to blocking the streets for the upcoming Gopher Tortoise Festival. The original plan for the original plan for the Gopher Tortoise Festival road closures interfered with a few businesses on Bryan Street, and that was really sort of the area of contention. They wanted to close Bryan Street all day on Friday, and there are businesses that are open that need access to their businesses on Friday from Bryan Street, so the city made some amendments there. They're still going to be able to close some roads for the festival, but not interfere with any businesses. Also, they voted, or they discussed allowing event centers to have alcohol licenses in the Town Center District. Basically, this is for the, about said the Ashley Slater House, but it's the atrium. There are a lot of events in the atrium, or at the atrium where they serve alcohol. They don't sell it. Some of these events have, you know, open bars and things like that, and it's not a real wild scene. I've been to a few of them. They'll have drinks, wine, beer, things like that available. So, they agreed, and I actually don't think that's been officially decided that you can do that, although it's been allowed. But they're going to, well, they held the first reading, and I guess they'll do a second reading, a public hearing at the next meeting to allow event centers, again, mainly the atrium, to have alcohol at those events. One of the biggest things that they did, or I say big, it's one of the neatest things to me, was they discussed slash approved an RFP for the sale of the Martin Center. There's a group of local folks in town known as the Martin Center Preservation Company who would like to buy the Martin Center. Now, the Martin Center was appraised at $208,000. That's when the city initially mentioned selling it a while back. That's not, you know, they didn't get a bid close to $208,000, okay? The Martin Center needs a significant amount of work. It needs to upgrade some of the lighting at $41,000. Sound system is an issue, really. If any act comes in, they have to bring their own sound system with them. To upgrade the sound system, be a minimum of $75,000. There are also other upgrades that the center needs as well. So whoever buys it is going to have to spend a significant amount of money, and nobody's going to buy it for $200,000, and then turn around and put another hundred or so thousand in, because what I just listed is well over $100,000. So the Martin Center Preservation Company would like to buy the Martin Center for $100,000, and I believe they are going to allow that. And of course, if the Martin Preservation, the Martin Center Preservation Company ever decides to sell the theater, the city will be given the first right of refusal to buy it back. So, that was also on there. At the last meeting, the city discussed the outside employment personnel policy, which, you know, mainly pertains to police officers who want to work on their days off for other agencies. Some work in smaller towns in Atkinson County, some may work in Nichols or Brockton or places like that. And there's a policy in place that prevents that from happening. However, with the school system basically starting its own police force here in the last school year, they don't have any officers working for that. They do have a director, but they haven't hired any officers until they're able to do that. What they've been using are off-duty police officers and off-duty sheriff deputies. So the city police department wants to be able to contribute to making sure our schools are safe, but we had a policy in place with the city that prevented that. So they made some changes to that to allow that to happen. So, that was pretty much what they did. There was one other item. There was an item they discussed about defining lounges and clubs in the Gateway District, basically, that would deal with the Fountain Inn, the old Shoney's Bar, the old Boomers, for you old timers, me being one of those, but who remember Boomers. As the Fountain Inn, well, the Shoney's has changed hands and changed names. There's always been some type of lounge that operated down there in that old Shoney's or that old Boomers building. And I don't think that's really supposed to have been done, and they were talking about fixing that with this Gateway District item. That was a first reading. They'll come back and handle that a little bit later. Now, those were the boring things. Now, the Martin Center, the sale of the Martin Center did generate a little bit of discussion. And again, I don't know when they'll close on that, how that'll take place, but it seems to me that they did agree to sell to that company headed up by a couple of local businessmen here in town, who do have businesses in the downtown area, who are in charge of this Martin Center Preservation Company, again, going to buy it for $100,000. And the two folks who buy it, and I'm not, you know, I'm not going to give their names. They can come on and say it. I don't think it's a big secret, but I'll hold that for a little while longer. But I know they're very interested in music, and they'll do something with that. We will have some events, some very good events in that building once everything is taken care of and they get the renovations that are needed to it. Now, what about the items on the agenda that didn't require any action, the ones that tied up the lion's share of the work session? There's one interesting item. I'm going to skip over the travel policy. We're going to kind of lump a couple of these all into one discussion here in the next few minutes. The city last night discussed the item here. It's item 13. It says, "Discuss selling or retaining the old maintenance shop building." Now, what that is about is there, I don't know if it's a group, but if it is a group, the person who was out in front of that group is Minister Richardson, who has come to several city commission meetings and let the city know that she has a desire to help people, to help those who are less fortunate. Now, the old city shop building, which is just across the railroad tracks, it's not far from Greater Destiny Church. I can't remember the name of that road that runs through there. If you go past the In-N-Out Store, turn left there at Greater Destiny, on the right just before you cross to the railroad tracks, that's where the city shop used to be. Now, the city has moved the shop out on the 206 connector to the old truck stop out there, but they still have that building, and the building's not, it's a large building, and it's not being used for anything. What Minister Richardson would like to do is to repurpose that building into a, they didn't use the term homeless shelter, but I believe that's ultimately what they would like to turn it into. It was framed at last night's meeting as a place that would be repurposed and would offer food to those who need it, okay? But there's, and if you listen to the discussion, and I believe Commissioner Pearson said at one point that while it may not be a homeless shelter to begin with, that would possibly be in the plans. And I've talked to some people who have knowledge of this, and they say that ultimately that is the plan, is to do a homeless shelter. And we do have some homeless people here in Coffee County. I've never seen a study. Don't know how big the problem actually is, but if you've got one, it's a problem. What's interesting, and nobody will say this, the city won't say it, but you, most municipalities do not want homeless shelters in their cities, in their communities, and particularly in a small community like Douglas, that doesn't have the resources to really take care of a large homeless population. If people find out there's a homeless shelter here, what are they going to do? They're going to come here looking for help. So it's a tricky situation. I'm not saying it's good or bad, one way or the other, but the reality of the situation is that if you bring a homeless shelter to Coffee County, you will have homeless people come with it. You will take care of the homeless people who are here, and you will take care of others as well. So, how's the city going to handle this? I don't know. I don't know. I don't know what kind of plan there is. I don't know what kind of study there is. Don't know if the building can handle it, and that was one of the things that they talked about. It seems like a good idea in theory, practically speaking, what's going to happen. So, that will be discussed later on. Again, repurposing, you know, selling or retaining or giving the old city shop building to a group that would like to ultimately turn it into a homeless shelter again. I see the need for it, and I want to be careful with how people take my comments, but you have to be careful also if you do something like that, because that has a way of snowballing. And instead of taking care of the people who are here, it will attract others. And if you take a look at places like California, and I know that's an extreme example, that's not, you're not going to have that kind of influx here, but you see how a large homeless population, you know, if you make your community attractive to homeless folks and transients, it can cause problems for businesses and for individuals here in Coffee County. So the city will have to tread, will have to tread carefully. Obviously, you want to help people, particularly in the wintertime, when things do get rough, you want to make sure that people are taken care of and people are safe, but at the same time, you don't want to cause a lot of problems for your population. So anyhow, that'll be brought up again. Now, after that, the city discussed shifting, it's listed here on the agenda, as shifting the termination authority from the city manager to the council, okay? And Commissioner Pearson was driving this request, and I showed some of the discussion last night. And initially, this request is a reaction to a few personnel issues that have come up over the past couple of months. And I understand what Ms. Pearson was saying, and I can see where there might, could be some changes to how the city handles these kinds of issues. What Ms. Pearson had a problem with is, say, the city manager fires somebody. Well, they appeal it. They go before an ad hoc committee. Well, the city manager and human resources appoint the ad hoc committee. Well, the city manager just fired the person, so they're going to get the ad hoc committee together that the city manager handpicked. Is that going to cause a conflict of interest? Okay? Is the ad hoc committee going to go against a ruling that the city manager already made? The city manager is, you know, depending on how far up the chain or how far down the chain the members of the ad hoc committee are, the city manager is ultimately their supervisor. So, are they going to go against their supervisor and reverse someone who may have been wrongfully terminated? That's what Ms. Pearson was saying. Now, that makes sense. I don't know how other cities do it, okay? I know that this policy has been in place, they said last night, since 2013. So we're in 2019, six years, give or take, depending on when the policy was passed, what part of the year of 2013, but it was passed six years ago, and that's how the city's operated, under at least one other city manager, under Terrell Jacobs. Now, I'm not someone who likes to do things just because that's the way it's always been done. I understand the need to change and the need to evolve and to adopt new best practices as needed. So I don't want to sit up here and say, "Well, you're going to keep doing it this way because it's the way it's been done." What I would like to know, and this is again what they decided, was let's look and see what other cities do, and if there are any other options, let's do it. Now, what I am not in favor of doing is taking that authority from the city manager and giving it to the city commission. I do not think the city commission needs any more power, needs any more influence than it already has. I don't think any government needs any more power or any more influence over its citizen than it already has. In fact, in my opinion, the governments that we have, and pick a government, pick a government anywhere, at any level, it has too much to say over what we do on a day-to-day basis. Now, this wouldn't necessarily affect the day-to-day operations of the city, but it would have a change, have a direct effect over the city employees. But it's extending power and authority to the commission or to a governing body that doesn't need it, okay? Listen, most governments are not good stewards, and most government officials are not good stewards of the power they have. They're not good stewards of the resources that they have. The city commission is, very much falls into that line. We're going to talk about that here with the travel policy. We're going to get to that in just a second. I think the city, this city, I'm not talking about individuals. I'm talking about as a group, as a whole, this commission has not acted honorably in a lot of ways. Now, several individual commissioners have, and several individual commissioners have not. But the reputation that the commission has is not one that I want, is not one that would lend itself to me wanting them to have more influence than they already have. And Commissioner Pearson has shown on several other occasions that she wants to expand the power of the commission into other areas of the city. In short, I think she, I know whether she admits it or not, I know that she wants to control the day-to-day operations of the city as much as possible. Now, we saw this back, it was either in October, November, when they were getting ready to hire the police chief, when Ms. Pearson asked that the city change its policy, its personnel policy, that says that the police chief reports directly to the city manager. She wants the police chief, or wanted the police chief, and I'm sure she still would like to have that power now, to report to the mayor and the commission, not to the city, not to the city manager. Why would someone want that? To control the day-to-day operations of the police department. And law enforcement is an area that Ms. Pearson is very interested in, to the detriment of the community. All right? She has a problem with law enforcement. She'll tell you she doesn't. She'll get on there and say that I'm making it up, that I'm exaggerating, and I'm doing this and I'm doing that, but I'm not, because I've seen it. I have an open records request, or actually, an incident report from last fall that I submitted, that I received via an open records request to the city regarding a run-in that Ms. Pearson had with a law enforcement officer at the elections office. She was very rude and very belittling to the officer who was simply doing his job, okay? And that has been something that has followed her throughout her career. She has done it many times, okay? So no, I don't want to give her or any other commissioner or the mayor any more power than they already have. And I would think most of them don't want it. They already got enough aggravation going on with just being a commissioner. Then I've got to control the day-to-day operations of the city? No. So thankfully, this didn't pass. I hope it doesn't, okay? I hope it doesn't, because it's a bad idea. It's a terrible idea. Now, I'm not saying that there don't need to be some kind of changes. If they want to change how they do these committees and these appeals, that's fine, but I wouldn't bypass the city manager and give it directly to the mayor and the commission. And I don't care who the mayor and the commission are. I wouldn't do it, okay? Do not like government having any authority, because you realize when you give the government more authority, that's taking authority away from the people. Taking our, taking our authority away and replacing it with a government, and then trusting the government to try to make the best decisions for us, and they can't do it, they don't do it, they usually mess up whatever they get involved in. I'm sorry. I don't like government. I pay my taxes. I see the value in government, but I don't like the way that government has evolved in our country. And I don't want government having more authority over what I do than it already has. It's got too dang much as it is. Now, travel policy, for the third time, third time, third time in, what are we, seventh night, third time in 10 months. So about every three months, about once a quarter, the city discusses personnel, I mean, not the personnel policy, the travel policy, okay? Now, the travel policy became an issue in August of last year when I submitted open records requests to the city, wanting to see the expense accounts from the mayor and commission at the GMA conference in Savannah. I received those documents. I wrote a story about it, because several of our commissioners used very poor judgment in their, in how they spent money, how they spent the city's money at the GMA conference. The city made some changes to the personnel policy, which was really wide open. You could do kind of whatever you wanted to do. If anybody limited their spending on city trips, it was because of their own convictions and their own belief, not because the city had. Brian says just adopt the state travel policy and move on. We're going to get to that, because they won't do it, and they should. But I agree. The city had no real policy over that, so it was left up to the individual commissioners to do, to be good stewards of the people's money. And if you followed that story, to continue to follow it, several were not good stewards of the people's money. They're still not good stewards of the people's money, and I think the city is dropping the ball by not doing what Brian suggested, which is adopt the state travel policy. Just adopt the state travel policy, and you don't have these problems. The commissioners who are trying to justify spending more money and going early to conferences and staying late, and that has happened, okay? That has happened. That's, that's not, well, look, you can do that if you want to, but you pay the room when you get there earlier, and you pay the extra room when you stay late. The city pays for what goes on when the, when the conference is in session, okay? I remember, I've worked, and the reason I say this, I've worked for the government twice in my life. I worked for the Health Department, the Health District one time. I worked for South Georgia State College one time. And when I traveled, I was given certain guidelines that I had to follow. Now, I could spend whatever I wanted to spend. I could go pay $150 for a meal if I wanted to, but I was only going to get paid, I was only going to get reimbursed, $75. And also, I paid for this stuff on my own, and I turned in receipts when I got done. Now, I believe if I remember correctly, that the, you know, both entities would pay for my rooms upfront, but I was left to pay for my own expenses when I was there. Then I turned my receipts in, and they reimbursed me. So I had to have documentation, and I had to answer a question. And I had, you know, I had, if there were any problems with what I spent, I had to explain myself. The commissioners are not above the law and not above the rules, and this is what gets me, okay? Good leadership, there are several aspects of good leadership, but you, to be a respected leader, you don't ask other people to do things that you are unwilling to do yourself, okay? You don't do that. And what the commissioners who want to change the travel policy, what they're doing is they're essentially saying that we are not going to abide by the same rules as our employees do. That's a very poor example. It also shows a lack of integrity on the part of the, on the part of the leaders, part of the commissioners. Wayne Roberts says run it like a real business, and that's what you do. You manage your expenses. You make wise decisions. You don't spend money superfluously and wastefully, and you certainly don't use a city conference as your family's vacation, and that's what some of these commissioners have done. And really, we did a little bit of digging. We didn't dig as deeply as we could have. We would have found tremendous abuses, and there continue to be tremendous abuses. I don't think the city's tough. I don't think the city's strict enough. And I have yet to hear any justification from anybody that makes any sense as to why the, as to why there's not a stricter travel policy. But it came up again, and it's, the two people listed on here who want to discuss it are the city manager Charlie Davidson, Mayor Tony Paul, but Ms. Pearson was extremely vocal. And the other thing that I've got a problem with, and this is when I made a few non-verbal expressions, if you will, during the meeting. Commissioner Durham and Commissioner Pearson still blame me for causing unnecessary problems with the travel policy. They maintain that I incorrectly reported the expenses, that I did not, that I misrepresented what they spent and how they spent it, okay? And I didn't. I did not offer any opinions in the news story. You can do a search on DouglasNow.com and find that story. I did not state any opinions and any explanations about what the expenditures were. I simply listed the name of the commissioner, what they spent on their room, and what they spent in meals. I've never had a problem with the price of lodging on one of these conferences, okay? Because the hotels are what they are. When you're told you have to go to Savannah, you have to go to Amelia Island for the MEAG Conference, or you have to go to Atlanta for Legislative Day, or whatever it is, you stay where you're told to stay. And some of those rooms are expensive. I got no problem with that, okay? What I do have a problem with is getting there early and staying late, if you're going to pay for, if you're not going to pay for it, okay? If you want to get there early, pay for it yourself. If you want to stay an extra day, pay for it yourself. Pay for your meals when you get there early. Pay for your meals when you stay late. I do not think that's asking too much, okay? But Commissioner Durham, as Brian has noted here in the last few minutes, used the word railroad last night, that, and it's, it's hard for me to interpret what the word railroad last night, that, and I, it's, it's hard for me to interpret what, uh, Commissioner Durham says sometimes. So I think what he was saying was that the city, the city officials were railroaded into changing the personnel policy by incorrect reporting, okay, or inaccurate reporting. My reporting was spot-on, it was dead-on, it was a hundred percent accurate. Okay? Hundred percent accurate. Uh, it's not my fault that they wasted the city's money, that they did all kinds of things they shouldn't have done on that, that conference and it cost the city a pile of money. Ms. Pearson also made a comment about the media. Okay? Well, I was the only media outlet that covered it, so she was talking about me, which they both used a little bit of restraint, because they called me out by name on multiple occasions, they decided not to do that last night, that may change in the next meeting, especially after this discussion. But, um, uh, but, but she had some comments to say about how, uh, uh, again, I misrepresented the numbers and the facts and figures, and I didn't, I didn't misrepresent the numbers. They are using these trips as vacations, as opportunities to entertain their family. The city has paid for family meals, that's not right. I don't have a problem with taking your family. When I worked at the college, I was told, look, if you go on a conference, if you're going overnight, a couple days, we're buying a hotel room, we're getting you a hotel room. You can take as many people as you want on this trip. All right? If you get an extra hotel room, you pay for it, but we're getting one regardless, so you can put as many people as you want to in that hotel room, but we're not paying any other expenses. Okay? So it's not wrong to take your family with you if the organization you work for allows it. What, what is wrong is, um, is getting your organization to pay for your family. Okay? Because that's, that, that, that's not, that's not right. That's not right at all. But travel policy came up again, and, 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 and once again, it, it, it's commissioners saying, you know, we're not gonna abide by the same rules our employees do, we're better than they are, we're not, we don't have to. They're under us, they have rules they have to abide by, we don't. Now, not all the commissioners feel that way. Okay? Not all the commissioners feel that way. And I think there are several, I know there are several commissioners who would like to see stricter rules put in place. Uh, and it's not just Commissioner Pearson and Commissioner Durham who would like to see the personnel, I mean, the travel policy relaxed, okay? But they're the ones who talk about it, the others keep their mouth quiet, uh, keep their mouth closed and won't discuss it, because they know it's not very popular. But, once again, I mean, what bothers me is they refuse to accept responsibility for their actions, they refuse to admit they've done anything wrong, they continue to try to justify wasting the city's money. It shows to me poor leadership, it shows a lack of integrity, it shows a lack of concern for the resources that they have at their disposal. I think it violates the public trust, and I think it could make some bad commissioners. And, um, I would love to see them change. However, they're indignant, they misrepresent the facts, and you can't reason with them with anything. So, um, as long as, uh, as long as that's the case, this is what we're gonna have to deal with. Now, uh, one other thing, we've been talking for over thirty minutes, I wanna wrap up. One other thing was the, uh, was the law enforcement issue at Roundtree Park, that was what it was. Basically, what you saw there is the fact that the, the, the mayor, uh, and, and commissioners, Durham and Pearson, are on opposite ends of the political spectrum right now, there, there, there's a gulf there, they don't get along, um, and, 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 uh, the two commissioners are trying to make it very difficult for the mayor, that was just a turf war. Um, I also learned that there was not a shooting over the weekend, when I say it wasn't a shooting, nobody got shot. What happened was a house got shot, uh, Friday night, Saturday morning maybe, uh, it could have been early Friday morning, but somewhere, you know, Friday, Saturday, uh, there was, um, a, a house got shot, a drive-by, I guess, maybe some cars got shot as well, but no one was harmed. Okay? And there was a credible threat, uh, of retaliation at a party at Roundtree Park on Sunday, uh, with regard to that shooting. So that's why the, um, um, so that's why they decided to beef up the patrols, and look, they're, ultimately, nothing happened. Kids were safe, families were safe, people in the park were safe. You heard Commissioner Durham say that he wanted to apologize to the people of Ward Two. Um, he actually said he wanted to apologize on his behalf to the people of Ward Two, which is really, really hysterical, but what he was trying to say was that he wanted to apologize himself, uh, on behalf of the city, for not communicating with the citizens of Ward Two, there would be extra police patrols down there. Look, they're splitting hairs and using, using that as an excuse to try to turn public opinion against the mayor. Um, I don't know how you feel about whether they should or shouldn't have communicated with, you know, with everybody about it, ultimately, they made it, they had to make a quick decision, they made it. I like decisive leadership, I like people making quick decisions in a hurry when they have to. Um, a lot of times, you don't have, you don't have the time to call everybody, have a meeting and figure out what you're gonna do, particularly when you're dealing with public safety, everything worked out. And from what I understand and talking to people who have, uh, uh, who have knowledge of that situation, that the, the overwhelming, uh, uh, consensus has been that, that everything was handled properly and nobody has really complained about it. So, um, everybody was safe at Roundtree Park, and that's ultimately what you want. Okay? You get down there on Sunday afternoon, you don't wanna have another shooting, a big fight, something get in there, something happen to break up, um, you know, what's an otherwise good afternoon. So, again, that was just a little bit of a turf war that erupted at the meeting, and these kinds of spats are gonna happen. Um, they're gonna happen, um, for as long as, uh, Mayor Polk is in office, and it's also gonna happen, uh, you know, well, I say, they're gonna happen as long as Mayor Polk's in office and Commissioners Pearson and Commissioner Durham are in office, because they're, they're, they're butting heads and you're gonna see this kinda stuff more often. So, you know, when it does happen, you know, keep that in, uh, keep that in perspective, that what you're seeing a lot of times is, is, is just the hyperbole and the rhetoric, um, of an ongoing feud, an ongoing turf war, an ongoing, uh, political squabble. Okay? Um, between a couple of different folks. And, 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 and again, I mean, I've, I've seen how those two commissioners have reacted to me, I've seen how they've reacted to other people, and, you know, Ms. Pearson made a comment yesterday that, at the meeting, that she wanted, she wanted to be fair, she wanted, she stood for justice, she wanted to make sure that people were not unfairly terminated, that people's rights were taken care of and so on and so forth, and she does, if it fits into her idea of justice and her idea of fairness, um, because you go down there and ask city employees if she treats them fairly and justly, and, you know, off the record, they'll tell you, a lot of them will tell you no, because she doesn't. Um, so anyway. But that's my take on the city commission meeting last night. They did some good stuff, did some things to make progress, particularly with the Martin Center, but then you get bogged down in all this other junk, and some of this stuff just won't go away, and it won't go away because our commissioners don't wanna do the right thing, they want to use the city for their personal gain. And, uh, as long as that is their attitude, these are the kinds of issues that we're going to have. So, next city commission meeting is two weeks, thirteen days now, two weeks from yesterday, and we're getting close to rolling over to Wednesday, so we're getting close to the twelve day mark. But anyway, um, we'll see what happens at the next one, we're gonna endeavor to be there. Um, also getting close to school starting, school's just around the corner, um, so pay attention to what's happening with the Board of Education and, uh, um, your, your, your school supply list, your school clothes list. Um, a lot of, a lot of folks in town, uh, don't have the resources to pay for the school supplies, uh, that they need, and there are several businesses and organizations who are having school dri-, uh, school supply drives, uh, you can donate to those, um, as well, we, we'll, we'll announce them as we learn about them. Uh, so, so pay attention to that as well. Also, real quickly, one last announcement, um, there will be a barbecue and yard sale at the Mary Hayes Center this Saturday, do a great work down, uh, down there for at-risk kids and underprivileged kids. Um, so if you're out and about Saturday, swing by the Mary Hayes Center, um, with Ms. Relford and Mr. George Blampy and several others, um, who are really involved in, in, in doing a great work down there to make a difference in the lives of the kids of, uh, of Coffee County. Uh, so the proceeds raised there will, uh, will continue to, uh, um, to positively impact those kids. Walmart Distribution Center donated some items from Walmart to be sold at the, uh, at the yard sale, it's, it's a mixture of different items, um, but a lot of this stuff is new merchandise, um, but for whatever reason can't be sold at Walmart, that Walmart has decided to donate. So, you know, if you wanna, uh, you wanna get a good deal on some good stuff, go down there and check it out at the Mary Hayes Center on Saturday. Thank you guys for watching, appreciate your comments, appreciate your interest. Um, uh, oh yeah, Brian is, uh, also announcing that the, uh, Board of Education meeting is, uh, this Thursday, I will actually be there, because the board is, uh, recognizing the Coffee High weightlifting team that went to California about a month ago. Um, and, uh, my younger son was on that team, so he's gonna be recognized, so I'm gonna go and hang out, and I may actually go to the work session at five-thirty where I get to hear all the good stuff. So, anyway, that's, uh, that's what's going on. We got a few more things, or several other items we need to talk about, didn't wanna, didn't wanna lump everything in here tonight, because we've all been, been talking almost an hour. Thank you guys for watching, a lot of you have hung on from the start to the finish, and I do, uh, I do appreciate that. Uh, we'll meet again before the end of the, uh, before the end of the week, and go over a few more stories, a few more news items we need to cover. Um, there's actually, uh, there's actually a lot going on, it's been a fairly quiet summer, but it's picking up here toward the end. Thank you again for watching, thank you again for supporting us at douglessnow.com, let us know what you think about us. Um, continue to watch us, continue to comment, continue to give us feedback, and we will continue to report the news, um, as always, fairly accurately and completely. Uh, thank you again, y'all have a good night. See ya.